First order of regular business would be the minutes. Minutes from the March 22 meeting. Guys had a chance to review those. We have, I have entirely. Another set of eyes on them.
I didn't see any vehicles out in place. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Keith Medcalf to approve the minutes. Is your second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Eric. Any further discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be your bills list and additional bills list and transfers. The last payment to the District Health Department is a big ticket item there, $233,000. That finishes it up for the year.
I have one question, Rhonda, I guess. What is that routine medical under E-Town, White Oak Care?
That's inmate medical. Those were bills that the jail sent to me before.
Where's my...
Right here.
Where's my...I thought Southern did ours.
Yes, before, Southern got to come in.
Okay.
Oh, sometimes billing's delayed.
So it's delayed billing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And sometimes we have to keep inmates in another facility for their safety because we've got maybe akin to a guard or whatever. It happens, believe me.
It just caught my attention because I knew it was Southern instead.
The other bill that was on the list was the bridge materials, the pre-stress concrete beams for the D-Head Road Bridge. Yeah, I knew you'd like that. $133,000. Then some, another bill for the contractor doing the work on it, and they've completed that work, but Brad will report that later.
I've got a question. I guess it goes to John. Why are we paying to haul the tires off when we can take them out there and make?
So basically, what we have to do, if we charge throughout the year, we have to pay to haul them off. From that point, once we clear them out, which was last month, everybody who picked up the natural bulk of item and whatever, everybody brings in, they can haul them for free. But we've been charged throughout the year. This is to clear everything brought in through the last year.
And John, just reminding Keith that we also have a limit how many we can keep on site.
Yes.
And you can find pretty dramatically when you don't keep those cleared out onsite.
You understand what I'm saying? Have to collect the money.
Yes, yes, yes. So we kind of didn't get paid for hauling them off. So it would be Rob Peter to pay Paul. I got you. Okay.
Don't you think we hasn't, over the years, haven't thought about that?
I was going to say, boy, it looked good in District Gordo and Blacktop. I thought you just want concrete every time. Here on that.
Here's the motion of bills and transfers. Motion's been made by Bernard, second by Gary. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be audit services for 21. Rhonda's asked us to approve or consider approval for continuation of our relationship with the auditor of Roy Hunter CPA. We got the same price of 15,900?
15,900, same price. This past year was the first time they had our audit really finished by the end of the calendar year, which is real what we need with our bonding requirements.
And this audit will be include what they call a single audit with the federal funds?
Right. This will be the second year of a single audit. They've done the first year, you're familiar with what we have going on.
Are they good to work with?
They are very good with the quit.
Part of the money.
Very timely, don't waste a lot of time. Like I said, they got us done by December 31st, which is important to us, the state, you know? The state's going to come in and do it every four years, but the state doesn't have the manpower to do it, so they asked us to find someone else. So I'd like to continue with who we have.
I'll make the motion to approve the audit.
Second, discussions?
Yeah. Was there a bail in Franklin this year about the DLG's pricing structure for the audits for counties? Do you know what that stands?
I read something Friday about where they were going to maybe save some money on the pricing for the clerks and the sheriffs. I didn't really see anything for the fiscal courts. So I'll read that one.
I see.
Any other discussions? Okay. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Next would be a proclamation you guys have in front of you, and I think the city did this the other day. If you've seen around town, the little blue pinwheels circling different properties, that's in relation to the Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I'm going to ask fiscal court to consider approval of this proclamation and enter it into a matter of public record for our fiscal court order book.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Keith. Is your second? Second by Jeff. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion carries. Jimmy, you get a copy of it. I think it's in your mailbox. I think you did a story with the city on that, too. We kind of communicate with the couple organizations here, the Nelsa and other folks. We actually help them with some office space and stuff. Next would be the central dispatch budget for 22, 23. You guys have received a copy of that a few weeks ago. I've actually reviewed that in a little more detail. Now, Rhonda, a payment to them this year will be small, $19,923. That will pay them out.
Paying to us.
To a payment to us, yes. Well, it will pay them, pay us out. The initial note was about $350,000.
Maybe a little before.
Some of you guys may not even been on the court when we initiated that.
Send them a line of credit.
Yeah. Been setting up shop, basically. And so now they'll have a little bit more money to operate the regular operating cost and give employees a reasonable raises and so forth. Questions on the budget?
I've got one. What's the contract services? $76,000.
You talk about the telephones, the contract, $76,000, Sean, that is?
That is for his and associates. That's like Gary Holt, who does our computers. Anyone that we have a working contract with that does IT for us or anything like that. So it all comes out of that money.
Mainest contract?
Mainest, anything that we repairs, anything like that that's under contract, any leases and things like that that we have, all comes out of that budget.
You got a, you have a mainst contract with CAS off where the folks do.
That's right.
That's in there.
Yeah, and it looks like typically you don't spend all that money in the line items, what I've seen in the past. You have questions? entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the budget for you.
Motion's been made by Eric, second by Gary. Discussion, Keith, you have a question?
I'm done.
All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Thank you, Sean. Okay, next would be second reading of the zoning regulation amendments. Guys held first reading in our last court meeting. I guess, do we need to do these individually, you think?
I think you can do them all.
Oh, one time? Yeah. I think that'd be the best way. You guys have already approved on first reading, advertised for a second. I would ask for a motion to approve on second reading and adoption of the amendments that we made from the last court meeting. Motion by Bernard Ice, second by Jeff Lear. Discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Has a weak aye on there, Keith.
Weak aye.
Okay, parochial school transportation. You guys have a copy of the resolution in front of you for the 21, 22 year, authorizing the judge to make some middles to get reimbursed for that this year as usual. And in fact, you'll be glad to hear that the state budget included more money in the budget for those expenses, so we should get made whole this year, this coming year. We've always got pretty close to being whole, but not exactly.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Eric. Further discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Okay, jail report.
As of this morning, we have 117 inmates, 37 of state, six of female state inmates, 31 male inmates, 54 working circuit court taxes, 12 females, 42 males. In the court taxi, we have 16, four females, 12 males. Have a total of 89 males and 22 females. The freezer was installed last week, it's working good.
You knew they were going to ask that, didn't you?
And the day after we got it installed, the company comes down to rent it the next day. We just got to move all of them out before y'all take the rent to the rest of the car.
Recycle, same. Got any questions for the jailer? Moving on, EMS report. Joe's not able to be with us today. Road Department report, Lee.
Hey, we are now in phase three of the bulky item pickup. We have finished the Potter Shop Road, Woodlawn Road area, Springfield Road. We're currently in Bloomfield area, around Yates Cuny Neck Road. We'll work our way towards Chaplain and then back towards Plum Run area, and we'll eventually finish up in the Louisville Road area. We finished up phase two of the pickup a day early, so we had a crew work on the approaches of the new D-Head Bridge, and we had another crew do some shoulder work on old Nelsonville Road. That was a couple weeks ago. And then this past Friday, we had a few guys out, that was out, and it was going to make bulky item pickup a little bit more challenging, so we decided to shut down the pickup and finish work on the D-Head Road Bridge approaches to get that road back open. And I'm happy to report that the road is open and that we will probably pave the approaches later this, later this year, whatever Brad has.
So you guys, a lot of us, you probably haven't been, you may have been down there. So your two top pictures are what it was before.
Anybody else want some of this?
Yeah, Keith here.
There you go.
So your two top pictures are what it was before, and your two bottom pictures are what it is today.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah. So, you know, for the public, you know, it was what we call a low water crossing, which is basically culverts covered with concrete, and anytime it bring anything at all, we go up top of it, a lot of flooding. As you can tell in one of the pictures, how high the water actually gets. And so now what we got is a clear span bridge, so it spans the creek with about six foot of clear height under it. And, you know, that was dictated partially by, you have to hydraulic modeling to make sure you don't backwater. So there'll be times, if Mother Nature wants to, it's going to flood down there still. But this will take care of it 90% of the time, guys. It's a big improvement. We've got those places and other places in the county, just sometimes it happens.
Brad, for those in the audience that realize that in order to build a bridge that would have completely got the whole area out of water, you would, it would have been millions of dollars.
Well, and you would have had to raise the approaches.
You'd have to raise the road up and build the actually pillars and run it all the way out, but probably about quarter mile, probably better.
Probably. And you got to be careful how you backwater up onto neighboring, you know, anytime you raise an approach, you're creating a dam, right? And so you have to, that's reason that one picture's in there to show you guys how high that water gets from time to time. It's a lot of water.
Was that the normal score?
Correct. Correct. So, anyway.
Good job. People should never, ever lose their life very good.
We hope so.
Yes.
We hope so.
Good project.
Good project.
Very good project. Thank you, just before again, thank you Brad and your crew, and thank all the Nelson County people for putting their project on.
Moving on, Froman Greenwood, I want to talk to you guys about that. We have a request from a property owner. Did you guys get my map that I sent you?
Yes.
Sent you an email on this.
Closing the road.
I see some stairs.
Closing the tail end of the road. You don't like that. We've done some.
It's a request at the very end of the homeowner, property owner owns both sides of the road. We've done this process before. I got to bring to you from fiscal court to get that blessed and start the process. Jeff has found two people that would be willing to help with this process. Let me find the KRS, KRS 178070, discontinuous of a county road. It requires two viewers, no vested interest. Jeff, what's those two names again?
Ken Wright here and James Victor.
Yes. So we would need the court to approve the start of this process, which I could go out there with those two people. I'll come back to you guys with the report. We'll have a public hearing. We go through the process. That's what today's request is.
So at this time, we need a motion to approve movement forward with the closure of this road and appointing those two, Ken Wright here and who else?
James Victory.
James Victory, to the committee to go out and review the property and report back to the court.
And it's only a portion, it's the very end.
Yes, it's pretty, but not as much as he works on it. It's pretty.
And he's going to give the ground back to do the turnaround?
Yes. That's the reason we, I always make them do a plat, so that there's a dedicated.
Recorded.
Recorded for the.
For future, yeah. He just.
They've got problems teenagers coming out there and partying and stuff. He's going to build a house at the end of that, so.
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, David. Second by Bernard Ice. Any further discussion or questions? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry.
So I'll start the process, you'll see it go in the paper, or I'll get in touch with these people and bring it back to you guys for a public hearing and then report to the court. Mago did actually slip in yesterday and paved Patton, a portion of Patton. And they paved a portion of Thomas. They just, a paper broke down, so they didn't get to all of it.
But they got all the work on Patton that was ordered.
All the work that was approved on Patton, but it was only a portion of Keith, if you remember. Started from Iced Town, almost to where the split is with, what is that? Mount Grand?
Roman Fork.
Roman Fork, Church Road.
Or by Comstock, did it get?
I don't know, I haven't been out there. I got the text this morning that it broke down, because I knew you'd be asking. He didn't tell me. He said about halfway, that's all he said. So now we're just kind of playing with it. And realize for the rest of, you know, we've got two lists that we still need to approve from last year's money. And what's going on with Mago is they're, you know, they use us as fill-in work. They got this huge project up at Maywood, and you'll notice them go out there and then days that they need fill-in time, you guys know that, they'll run and kind of do some of our projects.
And they've got plenty of work to do for us.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to get it done before July 1.
Trying for.
That project on 150 seems like it's taking so long to get done.
It feels that way, don't it?
It's the same time of the contract, you know? You've got the contract. You've done a lot of traffic, you're not building new roads, you're doing the farms and fields.
Well, the problem is, the Maywood residents trying to get out on 150 and that traffic is so bad with that construction, they can't get out. If they would open up that entrance at that red light, they would have, you know.
That will come late, I think. They've got to be done by July 1, or there's liquidated averages.
I could read on Blacktop. Close down the plants. Looks like the next step on a lot of it to me.
Yeah.
Which is a lot of filling on the side instead of.
That's the thing, y'all. Okay. Landfill soloway for court, yes, I want to report there. The roadside cleanup will start on April the 12th. You can sign up, call our office for the nonprofit organizations that participate with that. April 12th, our initial sign up start. And John, do you have a rest of your report?
The bulky item numbers, this is third week three. So cubic yards was 1,512 cubic yards, 311 tons, 2,520 tires for a total cost of $12,641. We're also winding down on the Forest Main Sewer Project, so we got a few yards. Once we get a little drier weather, we get all the yards and stuff, seed and straw and get that buttoned up. We had our startup for the pump station, everything went well with that, so what you do, we got to test our line.
Well, it's probably about 1.8 million?
1.3.
1.3.
Plus materials.
Plus materials, yes.
Material, yeah, I was sitting there. It's close to 1.8 total on it. I'm just thinking out loud. And we didn't have to borrow any money to do it. Keep our fingers crossed, keep moving forward with this plan that we have. There won't be a whole lot of debt service necessary, some, but the next judge, unfortunately, will have to deal with that. I'll be making recommendations and helping the next judge finance that project. You're looking at probably multi-million dollar expansion of a landfill.
We did get our tape application submitted, I believe, two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, which is the last phase of the permit to get that expanded. We got that turned in and just wait, go and go back and forth.
It'll be about four or five. We both sent back to us and it's a process.
It's a process.
Yes.
Okay. Recreation report. Brad, you want to talk a little bit about some fencing that's on the baseball field to allow some additional. So I'm going to give you guys, remember last time we was here, Derek's not with us today, so I'm his fill-in. We talked about the issue with so many people playing baseball this year, which is a great issue. And so what Derek has asked you guys generally, remember we brought it up about doing some fencing out there? I've highlighted it on that map that I gave you that kind of shows where he wants to move in the softball fence in order to use some of the outfield for smaller children, and you can create some three fields for T-ball and coach pitch. And it's a way to accommodate the increased numbers. And the second page, second and third page of that are two quotes that we received to do the fencing. So today with the request, you probably only get one. Keith got it. I think it's right around $9,000, is that right, Keith? What's the first one, say?
Yeah, one's 91, and one's 9,000.
For you guys, remember, we have allocated in our budget an appropriation for some capital expenses this year, and we still got several dollars left available for any improvements that we want to make. Remember, we did some blacktop in our parking area, maybe steal the other and strike the other part for the rest of the parking. And so there are, there are some funds available to pay for this and still have some money left over.
So this is basically just the beginning of the project, right? We're just redoing the fences, or is this going to be where you're splitting that field, correct?
That's where we're splitting the field. What you do is you move the fence in. The fence was originally 300 feet.
Right.
Well, for typically what's being used out there is a girl's softball. 300 feet fence is pretty deep for a female softball field. So they moved it into 200, then utilized the outside for some additional field. So that'll take care of moving the fence in.
There's record number of children people are signed up this year.
Yeah.
And you got to think, the little fields that they're going to make, I mean, Derek, think about it, these are for little guys and girls. I mean, they don't need fencing, and they just need the bare basics to play a game and practice. Practice is a big issue. I mean, give people practice time. We got to get them better.
Got to get them better. It's a major league.
I would recommend approval of the expense here, that's over my spending limits, reading I brought it to you guys to.
Motion to approve the spending.
Thank you, Bernard.
On the 9,000?
9,000. Bear Creek Fence, he does.
Second by Eric. Further discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. Anything else, Brad, on recreation?
Not really, it's just, you know, season's starting.
In your mailbox, has everybody been to their mailbox this morning? You got, there's a resolution in your mailbox. Raymond, I kind of amended the resolution that you had presented to us on backup program to fit our court's needs, and there will be an interlocal agreement that we'll have to deal with in the future to go along with this. But this resolution basically authorizes the county judge to enter into, remember, our interlocal agreement, acknowledging the fact that the Nelson County Sheriff's Office will be involved in a unified program called backups in our central Kentucky area. Is that, that's the terminology. So I would need a motion from fiscal court to do, to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the backup resolution.
Motion been made by Jeff. Is your second to that motion? Motion, second by Bernard Ice. Discussion? Question?
So we're covered legally here, correct?
Matthew's reviewed it?
Everything looks good to you, Matthew, on that?
Yeah.
Good deal.
All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproved? Motion will carry. That's very seldom will you use that program. It could be beneficial to all. You have a tornado or a disaster or something.
It's going to be wild, wild west going in other counties and whatnot.
You know, law enforcement, police departments, they're a little territorial, so they're not going to allow everybody to come into their territory without raising cane with somebody.
Are you going to work that out with them, Raymond, before you go? Are you going to let them know you're coming to, like to say where we don't step on toes?
The way we're being part of the board of directors for the Kentucky Sheriff's Association, we call the sheriff in that particular county that we would be going to and let them know we're looking into a theft of this magnitude and we're going to be in their county. Most likely, 99% of the time, they will provide a marked unit from that county to go with us.
So it's like a worker relationship thing? You know basically where you can do that.
Correct.
Okay.
If I don't have a sheriff's number, I can call Jerry Wagner, who's the director, and he'll give me the contact, and we'll be in contact.
I'd say as long as you keep good working relationships.
And I deal with most of the sheriffs in the state, so.
You got it. Thanks, thank you. Under old new business, just to report to you guys, full budget is required to be presented to you by May 1. We expect to have that completed by then. However, it may require a second meeting. If we cannot get all the numbers that we want, may want to have a special meeting on the 26th. That could be by Zoom if you can't be here. But we hope to have it done by the 19th. Just can't keep that in your mind, if you don't mind. And just hand the budget off and adjourn the meeting. That's to meet that statutory requirement.
26th.
26th of the Tuesday following the.
April.
April, uh-huh. But now, if you already have plans to be out town, it'll be a Zoom, and if you can't make it, all I need is a quorum. But it won't be a discussion on it, just to present the budget. There are a lot of moving parts right now to the state's budget, and which affects some of, some of the things that we do as well. Speaking of the state budget, there's some state projects that I want to talk a little bit about. In particular, if you saw on the paper, or I think I sent you guys an email, Nelson County Fiscal Court received $10 million in a direct line item appropriation for a local water project that we've already agreed to participate with, with North Nelson Water District. And now a resolution that we had already approved, that you guys approved, allows us to, allows us to manipulate or change the amount that we've committed to that project to where everybody benefits from that additional $10 million. You guys remember that?
Yeah.
Okay?
We mean to, we remember that.
Well, sometimes you.
$2 billion.
The $5 billion was hard enough.
And so that's, that has to come into our budget.[1643.54] And so that's, that has to come into our budget, we gotta figure out how we're gonna make all that work, and will it be a one-time amount, will it be in two different split allocations, we'll see about that. The other thing, it was in the budget, that really doesn't affect fiscal court as much as its community, is that $10 million, that's a Nelson County vocational schools' debt, similar to what Bardstown received a few months ago. And the county school systems now are gonna have enough money to renovate their vocational school, which is a, is a big, big deal for us. Actually, we led to support and made phone calls, tried to get that accomplished, and I think we were able to do that in a good way. The, something for the public to know, the court to know, is this year is American Fuji Seals 125th anniversary. Company Fuji Seal bought what was, used to be Little Two Owens, Illinois, about 21 years ago. And they've since continued to expand and hire employees. They're at 661 employees, probably our top employer of the county and paid good.
Good wages, Jeff.
Yeah, they're really good to the community. Magistrates, you have anything else on our old new business questions?
Question on the list, how far are you on, can we get some preliminary looks at it? I got a feeling the number's gonna be kinda skewed this year.
It's gonna be skewed because of the, of the capitals. We'll try to have you something to review within 10 days to 14 days, probably. Is that, I can, if you take this year's budget...
I know I walk in there and see it on a blue pad out here.
Well, it would be chicken scratch right now.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just, I just gotta, it's gonna be vastly different than I...
And again, once I present it, we'll have a full, basically, two months to, and I'll get you guys input like I normally do on your capital projects that you normally want to participate with or include. And I already got around the list, by the way. Culvert over on Candy Fork Road, district is that, is that your district?
Yes, it is my district, yeah.
So, and of course Keith got his thing last year, so I got another magistrate or two looking for some projects as well. I'll try to get that to you as soon as possible.
You got yours.
I've got some more prompted.
Any, any other questions?
Western Bypass is still on target.
I'm sorry?
Western Bypass is still on target.
You know, I did my best to get a copy of those road projects in the budget, to where I could print it out, give you guys a copy of it, but it's not posted anywhere where I can get my hands on it. But the Western Bypass was on there, a connector, the Western Connector, and then possibly a Western Bypass for some studies to be done on that as well. One of the main projects that, construction-wise, was to get from McDonald's to Walmart completed to connect what they're finishing, what they're working on now. And the Western Connector, and Western Bypass, and 245, all this, all the way to I-65 was one of the projects as well.
Four lane?
Four lane.
West, west to north, you're never one of them.
Yeah, all of them are good projects, and if we can stay focused on it like we've done in the last several years, you can see construction happening without adding a lot of new projects to them. But I tried my best to get to you, but I just could not find a printed copy. Senator did call me several times during that process, and we were all on the same page, the mayor, the judge, and the senate, and the house was all on the same page. I'll try to get your copy as soon as I can. They're afraid of releasing, 'cause it's still kinda in the air right now, I don't think anything be taken out.
When's where you gather a lot of sessions, is it, nine days or is it a few years?
I can't remember.
What's that?
What, how many, how many days before the session? So they only have two working days, don't they?
Yeah, two days left, I don't know.
I don't know when they will be.
I think it is two.
You have other questions? Good questions?
I do, I got one for you, since you're tap dancing on the projects. What about the, what about the allocation for the ARPA money going toward the, towards the cable internet that we've partnered up with Bardstown?
We committed $500,000 to match some other grant monies with the city, I haven't checked, you haven't checked on it lately?
Now, homes with the city was supposed to get with us one day, but I don't think that the grant has came through yet. We're waiting on the grant.
At the state.
At the state, some additional funds, yeah.
This is the grant that providers, internet providers, not just the...
Not just, yeah.
...spectrum and sets can apply for, that kind of...
And we committed, the court did, by resolution, $500,000 to match what was required. So it leaves us about $2 million additional funds in our ARPA budget, just a working budget, you guys have seen it, for the internet services in the county.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be... We need to move that this year, don't we?
Well, you really, if, you know, we ought to consider, if we're gonna get it done in the next year or two, hiring a consulting firm or so, an engineering firm.
I assume where Boone County did that, and that really helped.
Because Brad's plate's full, John's plate's full.
Sure.
My plate's pretty full. And, and, but in order, like we're doing the water projects, you guys approved hiring engineer do the small water project, Deputy Thompson and your fire, field station, we might wanna consider doing that with a consulting firm to move those projects along. Okay?
I have one more, Temple Avenue, the Saddle, the new school.
It was approved, eight funding on that, it's approved, $800 and some odd thousand. Luke, Lieutenant Governor, who actually was scheduled to be here Monday, but she had a funeral to attend, and hoped to reschedule that meeting, about $800 and 50 or 60,000, whatever it was, to the new school on Temple.
One thing, you brought up the field station. Brad, have you talked to city engineer on that, on the Greer Lane, on the field station? Have y'all got together yet?
Yes, we discussed that, and once we get an engineer on board, you gotta do the hydraulic modeling. I told you, you know the difference between a field station and a hydrant, can't put a hydrant on a four-inch line. So we're discussing that, and when we get into the weeds of what their system can handle.
And how much you want.
So yes, we're... Jeff has actually even noticed back on that one.
Is that ARPA funded?
Yes.
Hmm.
You're getting some money up your way.
My list is growing, dude.
$200,000, $300,000. Well, care of five, I'll take care of two. He's looking at $25,000 or $30,000. Go, work with him.
Cornish and Whitlock were part of that project.
See, they get a little short memory here once in a while.
I know, that's part of it. If we can get Northeast Nelson to split the money on it, though, that would really be...
They wouldn't have that kind of money, probably, to split on it.
I think they do that now, don't they?
Only got a hundred...
I can't wait for that money.
Only got a hundred and some thousand. No other questions or concerns? Can we go in, entertain a motion to go out of, before Eric hits me up again? Don't worry, he'll be in, he'll be in the office after the court meeting. Close session, entertain a motion going to close, out of regular session to close per KRS 61810. And just for you candidates for county judge, we're required to read this each time, so make sure that you, and I'm sure Chip, that'll be something that you're required to keep them on task with. Deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency, but only when publicity would likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency. Motion to approve. Motion's been made to go out of regular session into closed session by Gary. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff, all approve, say aye?
Aye.
Disapprove?
Pass the news.
Motion carries. Clear the courtroom, if you would, please, Brad.
I guess everybody's in, saying, okay, entertain a motion to go out of closed session and back into regular session. Some have been made, second?
Second.
Second by Gary, all approve, say aye?
Who made the motion, Jeff?
Jeff's in, Gary's second, yeah, okay, that's what my memory is right now. I gotta try to concentrate on what we're gonna talk about. We did, we did vote on that, didn't we? I wanna talk about the possibilities of the county entering into a lease agreement with a veterans group, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. They've talked to the city in the past about a piece of property. Brad, can you give us a piece of that, one of those maps? I wanna give the media a copy, if okay?
Yeah.
There's that, there's that. There's about one acre of a lot sitting in front of the Justice Center that they've asked us if we would consider providing that property, and I'm asking fiscal court to enter an lease agreement in the future to bring back to you guys, and you'll get to approve the plans for a veterans park, they're gonna raise some money to make it work. Veterans Park is down below the hill right now, we know it's own swimming pool hill, it just doesn't have the presence, and not real big, to be honest with you, and they wanna develop the property to a park, and I'm asking fiscal court to approve a moving form with a lease agreement of some sort.
So maybe, go ahead. Also maybe a motion?
Motion by Gary, a second, by Eric. Discussion, all approve, say aye?
Aye.
Always the last. Disapprove? Motion will carry. We'll come back with a full lease agreement, and as we negotiate and make it work for everyone, it will be, and we'll have a set of plans for you guys to view as well and approve. Okay? Motion to adjourn. Bernard Ice made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? I'm studying this morning.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second, all approve, say aye? Disapprove? Motion carries.